Motion carries.
Can I get a commissioner to note that the matters discussed in executive session were only those matters raised in the motion?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. We only spoke about what we discussed going in there, discussing this case and the questions we were going to ask.
Okay. And we have a request. Commissioner Kokari Stone would like to say something before we start the proceedings.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. Thank you, other commissioners, members from the public, our staff, all the parties withstanding. I just want to make a comment that it's been a tremendous process and for transparency's sake, wanted to acknowledge and honor everybody's due diligence up to this point. I know prior to my position here in January, there was a lot of other efforts and processes that have occurred to date. And I just want to commend my other commissioners as well in terms of really taking this very seriously. I want all parties withstanding to hear the due diligence that has happened in the last two days. And I'm particularly grateful for the, we had about 100, over 150 public testimonies yesterday. So I just want to mention that because I think it's important that the public understand it's been a very rigorous and thoughtful process. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else want to make a statement before we start? Hearing none. We will start with fire safety and emergency response questions. And we have first, Commissioner.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So these are questions for AES staff. So first of all, who will complete the fire suppression design for Code 855 compliance? Are you going to do that internally, externally? Because it was very incomplete as presented. Who's going to finish it?
Do we have Mike Simpson on the line from AES?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, thank you. I was sworn in the other day. Should I, do I need to swear in again?
No, you've been sworn in. Everyone else has been sworn in for this matter.
Okay, thank you. So, and I'll start out by, again, saying thank you to all the commissioners and the public who's able to hear me right now. We're very pleased to have received all this feedback. We continue to incorporate this into our plant design, into our operations, into our plans. And appreciate just the repeating what was said, the immense amount of time that was dedicated to this. But to answer the question, who's going to complete the design, with the systems that we presented to you in the plant design, that's entirely in AES's scope. We are the developer, the engineering, as well as the intended.
Executive session to discuss the items brought up by the, by the chair.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a roll call.
And Chair, just to make clear your authority to do this, this, I do consider this deliberations in connection with a quasi judicial hearing.
Yes, and it is specifically to discuss the order of questioning. We haven't started questioning. We do intend to question. There won't be any type of decision making discussion. It's specifically to ask each other how we want to present our questions.
And specifically, this is for the AES case that we've been discussing, just to make sure it's on the, not something else.
All right, let's go to executive, oh, roll call, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone.
Yes.
And Chair Camila Bustamante.
Yes. Okay, we will go into executive session to discuss our questioning and be out. Motion carries.
Can I get a commissioner to note that the, that the matters discussed in executive session were only those matters raised in the motion?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. We only spoke about what we discussed going in there, discussing this case and the questions we were going to ask.
Okay, and we have a request. Commissioner Kakari Stone would like to say something before we start the proceedings.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. Thank you, other commissioners, members from the public, our staff, all the parties withstanding. I just want to make a comment that it's been a tremendous process and for transparency's sake, wanted to acknowledge and honor everybody's due diligence up to this point. I know prior to my position here in January, there was a lot of other efforts and processes that have occurred to date. And I just want to commend my other commissioners as well in terms of really taking this very seriously. I want all parties withstanding to hear the due diligence that has happened in the last two days. And I'm particularly grateful for the, we had about 100, over 150 public testimonies yesterday. So I just want to mention that because I think it's important that the public understand it's been a very rigorous and thoughtful process. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else want to make a statement before we start? Hearing none. We will start with fire safety and emergency response questions. And we have first Commissioner.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So these are questions for AES staff. And so first of all, who will complete the fire suppression design for code 855 compliance? Are you going to do that internally, externally? Who's going to, because it was very incomplete as presented, who's going to finish it?
Do we have Mike Simpson on the line from AES?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, thank you. I was sworn in the other day. Should I, do I need to swear in again?
No, you've been sworn in. Everyone else has been sworn in for this matter?
Okay, thank you. So, and, and I'll start out by again saying thank you to all the commissioners and, and the public who's able to hear me right now. This, we're very pleased to have received all this feedback. We continue to incorporate this into our plant design, into our operations, into our plans. And, and appreciate just the repeating what was said, the immense amount of time that was dedicated to this. But the, to answer the question, who's going to complete the design? We, with, with the systems that we presented to you in the plant design, that's entirely in AES's scope. We are the developer, the engineering, as well as the intended owner and operator of this plant. We do bring in outside experts, of course. I think you've, you've seen reports from many of them. And so we'll continue to do that. We have a, we have an overall engineer record. And then as it relates to the compliance of NFPA 855, all of the systems, all of the, the plans, the documentation that's required for 855 compliance is, is in our scope. And we do bring together and integrate those efforts from, from those industry experts. And then lastly, I'll summarize by saying that, that all of our plans deployed since 855 has been adopted in, in the jurisdictions we've deployed in have been 855 compliant and continue to be 855 compliant. And as I mentioned, the system we proposed here has been deployed in, in many sites, the, the origins starting seven years ago, and the, the exact systems deployed over the past few years. Currently, today, we are UL 9540 certified as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So can you bring a water line to the site with, and separate the containers by 10 feet? So that's two questions. I know you answered 10 feet, but I want you to confirm that 10 feet between containers you'll do if we make that a condition. And also bringing a water line directly to the site, so it's right there.
I'll respond first. Yes, we are willing to accept a design modification to space the containers 10 feet apart. I'll allow Mike Simpson to speak more to the AES view on the need for a water line.
Yeah, thank you. The, as we mentioned, the enclosures are designed to provide all of the hazard mitigations that, that we specified that go above and beyond the 855 requirements without water. If the fire department required water, of course, we'd be happy to, to review all possible, all possibilities to get that into the site. We deploy these currently. We've got around a gigawatt hour operating, or sorry, 1.3 gigawatt hours, I believe, operating currently that, that do not have water, like additional water beyond the approach of the 30,000 gallons for non battery fires. So that's, that is our standard, and that's what has been approved by several other AHJs around the country. Of course, what, the only thing that matters is, is what the, what the county and the AHA needs at this site.
So in other words, you'd accept our requirement that the water line be brought to the site? If, I mean, I don't know.
Of course.
Of course, okay. How much water is needed for fire suppression? So describe a little bit about the 30,000 gallon tank duration with two hoses cooling adjacent containers for 24 hours.
I have not run that math. It, it would not, it would not go very long. But again, the 30,000 gallons was not designed for that application.
Okay.
I think just to reiterate, the position that is not AES's view that water is required to be applied on adjacent containers.
Okay, so that's if they're 10 feet apart, they won't catch fire anyway? I mean.
Yeah, it is our view that with the technology and the safety mechanisms deployed, there's not a need for the quantities of water that were being discussed at one point yesterday. That is not our expertise or recommendation or guidance of what should be applied.
So would the water line to the site help you during construction?
We have provided our initial water budget and plan for utilizing trucked water or additionally potentially the use of the hydrant, existing hydrant on County Road 14. We do not think building a water line, you know, two to three miles into the facility would, would be beneficial or cost effective for another construction or operation of the plant.
How far is the site from Route 14?
The entrance to the site is approximately 2.1 miles. It's about three miles if you were to then drive the interior roads all the way to the battery site.
Okay.
I have a follow up question.
Yes, follow up question?
We have a few follow up questions to that. It was our understanding that water would be used to cool the containers proximate to a container that would indicate that it was, had a potential to burn. Because I understand that we would be seeing the smolder before we would actually see a fire. What, if that is not the case, that water would not be used to cool the proximate containers, can you explain that? Because that was our understanding.
I'll initiate a response and Mike invite, yeah. So I think that water has been applied at other sites and other instances through conversations with the fire department and discussion of what may be appropriate additional measures. We agreed to the 30,000 gallon tank, again, mostly for defensive protection. But it is our view, and I think Mike can elaborate again, that water is not needed to cool adjacent containers.
Commissioner Green?
Thanks, Josh. But yeah, I'll, if it's okay, I'll spend just a few minutes on this. Please do interrupt me if I'm going too deep. I, I think it's worth discussing because I, I understand where the question's coming from. It's a very good question. So we've, we've asked that question quite a bit as well. And there are sites where we have deployed a strategy such as that. In, in those particular sites, it, they had a different, it was a different energy storage enclosure. And I'll get into why that matters. It was also in the middle of the municipal area where the, the fire, the, the water lines were already there, right? So the, the, what we found is that these fires can be very dynamic, right? We've studied them quite a bit. We've done multiple large scale fire tests. So these are tests that, you've seen the tests where we basically use all of our, our mitigation technologies. We, we ignite a fire, but then we suppress it. But we've also done testing where we say, if everything fails, right? This is the large scale fire test where you, the, the precondition is that the entire enclosure is on fire. It doesn't matter how it gets there, right? But that, that's what the test condition is. And then the, the reason why we do that test is because we're asked to do it. Again, we don't think it's necessary, but, but we're not here to debate probability. In those tests, what we find is that there, there is a heat release rate. So we have heat flux sensors that basically measure how much heat is radiating off of that enclosure and being conducted, right? Moving air, hot air around. And we also look at, at other dynamics of those fires. With that data, we can then figure out how, how that heat will transfer and really how propagation could occur or could be inhibited in those circumstances. Those tests also include like a target enclosure, if you will, where it's basically another of the same enclosure, emulating the spacing of the aisles that you've been asking about. And then we can, with, with all of that detailed data, we calibrate a model on that, right? So you, you, you know, normally models are only as good as you, as you, as your data, right? Garbage in, garbage out. But we can build a model, calibrate it with real world data, and then extrapolate small amounts, right? Move the enclosure a few feet further or closer. So we've done all that modeling on multiple sites. We look at the wind, multiple wind conditions that could carry the fire, carry the heat closer to an enclosure. We look at the insulating materials that we have. We have fire rated mineral wool insulation that is, is designed not to combust. We have, you know, spacing. We've got certain coatings on the systems inside that enclosure. And, and so we look at all of that and we say, how, how far away can we be? Really, how close can we be before propagation could occur in those extreme conditions, right? Entire enclosure on fire, winds moving right towards the enclosure. And that's how we get to those spacings. The, as I mentioned, the three feet spacing, there are enclosures that are designed not to propagate even that close. In, in terms of this plant, that we would, we, we have designed it based on those, those studies. And so it's designed not to propagate enclosure to enclosure in these conditions.
Thank you. Could you provide or direct us to these studies that were done to show this?
Yes, I'm not sure if they were submitted as part of this. Again, that's sort of above and beyond and is built into the HMA. But, but of course, we can, we can discuss those.
Thank you. If they are not in our packet, I would like those submitted for our review before a decision is made. Commissioner Green?
So this may be more for staff. Is there a fire hydrant with a water line at the intersection of the access road and, and the, and Highway 14?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Green, yes, there is one. It's a blue top which has a, it provides over 500 GPM gallons per minute. By the way, Jaume Bligh, and I, I acknowledge that I'm on, under oath. So it's a blue top, over 1,500 gallons per minute. It's at the intersection of Highway 14 and the entrance to the road that leads to their facility. I think they mentioned the distance is about 2.1 to three miles all the way to the upper north, northeast corner. Can I speak about the feasibility of installing a, a pipe all the way and a fire hydrant all the way into their facility?
I, I would love to hear your thoughts.
So after consulting with Public Works, that long of a, of a pipe, first of all, it would not have enough, the pressure needed, or the ideal pressure needed. It would be in the, in the neighborhood of maybe five to six, 700 GPM. What the fire department does in, in rural areas is tender shuttle evolutions. What that is, is we have trucks, or people that may not know what that is. We have fire trucks that all, all they do, their purpose is to carry water. And the average is 2,000 gallons. We have maybe over 20 of them in San Fecani. So what we do is we provide that water supply in a mobile way. One of the, one of the reasons why a fire line, a water line for fire flow or fire protection is not recommended is, first of all, because that would become stagnant water. We, we would have three miles of stagnant water that would have to be constantly being flushed out and replenished, which would be cost prohibitive for San Fecani. Or for the, anyway, aside of the cost, the main risk would be that this line feeds the, the Turkish Trail Elementary School. God forbid that the backflow preventer failed and all of that stagnant water was, made its way into the municipal water supply. All those kids could potentially be poisoned. So that is one of the reasons why I don't think it would be a good idea to have a water line all the way to the, and a fire hydrant all the way to their facility. Instead, what we do have is a, a fire hydrant that doesn't get better than that. It's a blue top. And through a system of tender shuttle operations or evolution, we would have a series of drop tanks by their water storage tank, the 30,000 gallon, which by the way, is going to be increased to 60,000 gallons. And we can talk about that a little later, too. A series of drop tanks where all the, these tenders would do is drive these 2.5 miles from the fire hydrant to the drop tanks. And all they would do is fill in, drop the water, go back, fill in, drop the water. And we could have upwards of six, 10, whatever is needed, depending on when we put that emergency operations plan together in collaboration with AES. So that would provide us over 1,000 gallons per minute indefinitely for the duration of the system. They mentioned that water is not going to be put onto the fire. The latest consensus and, and fire marshals discussions is that no, you want to let it burn. You want to isolate it, contain it, let it burn, protect the exposures. Yes, even, even if they are 10 feet apart, we would still put most likely water on the exterior just to protect. Maybe on, other than that, there's no other structures next to those containers. So obviously, we would consult with them and see what would be the best way of keeping thermal, other containers cool. Because as we all understand, thermal runaway needs cooling. Not what is one way, the other way is potentially a thermal runaway propagation protection system that also cools that. So it's something that we would discuss as we move forward through an emergency operations plan. But our suggestion would be to have a tender shuttle evolution procedure to provide water from that fire hydrant at Highway 14 all the way to their facility to avoid that stagnation, that stagnant water.
Yeah, thank you for a very complete answer. Is it all right if we move on to the next question?
I just have, it's okay if I have a clarifying question. My question is, what was discussed from AES was modeling and estimating. Have you actually, do you have any real life examples of how you mitigated the fires with some of your sites? And can give us more details about how that was handled?
Yes, and I apologize for, for the confusing statement. What I was intending to say earlier is that we do the modeling and evaluation. That's in parallel and supplemental to the empirical testing, right? So that, that is actually going to a large gravel parking lot. I mean, it's much more than that. It's a test laboratory. But, but in essence, it's a large gravel parking lot outfitting with literally hundreds of sensors. But otherwise, a, an enclosure that represents exactly what we have deployed. And, and then igniting the batteries inside that enclosure with another enclosure nearby. And these are full scale. These are not subscale or benchtop. These are full scale, 40 foot enclosures. Observing those fires both with visually with cameras as well as with these hundreds of sensors. And then using that data to, to calibrate the models after, after those enclosures have fully burned. It costs millions of dollars to do this. We're, we're happy to do that because of two reasons. Firstly, it is all about safety of, of nearby personnel and communities. And then second to that is because it, it enhances our availability, our ability to do what we do and earn revenue by doing it, right? It enhances our ability to, to provide uptime on these systems. I can, I, I believe maybe your question was also asking about how real systems work out in the field. And what I can say is that we are very fortunate to not have had this circumstance happen, right? I, I can't, you know, the, the, the absence of evidence is not evidence of absence, of course. But, but I'm pleased to report that at least the measures that we're taking for quality control of these materials in the factory, coming out of the factory, as well as the monitoring and preventative, preventative maintenance, but also preventative measures if we do start to see some sort of abnormality in operations. We've been able to avoid any certain, any kind of thermal runaway event in any of the enclosures. Again, over one point, I think it's around 1.3 gigawatt, it's over one gigawatt hour deployed operating today in the field based on the AES specified technology.
Thank you for your answer. And again, my question is going to be focusing on the requirements for a conditional use permit that's required by the county. And the number one requirement is health, safety and welfare of all in the communities. And so your answer is it's never been tested under real life circumstances. It's been tested in the parking lot. Is that correct?
That's incorrect. These are real life circumstances.
I'm going to ask again, the modeling and the testing that you've done has been a controlled laboratory in a parking lot? Is that a yes or no?
In a test laboratory. I described it as similar to a parking lot. So that would be incorrect. But we have tested this under real conditions. I'm sorry.
Okay, so you haven't. And why I am asking this is we've had testimony and evidence from both sides. We've had at least a probably close to 20 scientists, engineers, folks, even from public comment. And there's the biggest discretion between all the opponents and the supporters. The discretion is around the risk. What are the risks? We still do not know. And we also had. not know. And we also had, while the requirements have, we checked the box in terms of the fire codes. And thank you for your additional expertise, Chief Plot. We also have testimony and evidence provided to the board that demonstrates we are in high fire zones. So we're talking about containment within one area that's been tested in a quote-unquote simulation in a parking lot versus out in the desert. And the biggest concern with the risk has been the ignition of any type of chispas or sparks that would go into the desert and produce additional fire. So I'm trying to discern the risk in which you've tested in the laboratory, but not in real-life conditions under high-fire circumstances in our environment. Do any of your facilities, are they in a desert?
Yes, many of them.
Okay. So even though they're in a desert, you said you're fortunate. I would say you're lucky. And we can't depend on luck. So I'm going to ask again, have you tested this in a desert environment in which you would be able to control within real-life environmental climate circumstances?
Yes, ma'am.
So you tested in the desert environment, not in a parking lot?
Correct.
What desert environment did you test this in?
We have plants operating in or near Yuma, Arizona, near Phoenix, actually quite much closer to communities near Phoenix. We have sites operating in Lancaster, California. I've visited all of those sites personally.
So you, but you haven't actually tried the fire simulation in the desert on these sites?
No, but we did do it approximately 50 feet away from pine trees.
Okay, so the answer is no. Thank you so much.
Could I please elaborate on our response there? So I just want to try and make clear this concept that we have done testing with hundreds of sensors using all the most advanced technology to capture data and understand that. What I believe the commissioner is trying to ask is have we not then gone built a site that we plan to operate and then purposefully ignite one of our containers to test it where the project is being built? And I don't think that would be appropriate, just as I don't think this community would want us to build our site and then purposefully prove it by igniting one of the containers to see that it works. So we are doing these tests, collecting this data, and doing that in a proper certified laboratory setting. And then we've been operating these plants for this specific design, architecture, and technology for over six years, as Mike has indicated. So these are operating every single day in their environments, and we have not had a single issue. So I just wanted to try and give that additional context that the appropriate setting for this testing and fire testing and explosion testing, et cetera, is appropriate. And that we would not otherwise do this at a community or at a project site that we go build. We utilize the data from our test laboratories and from the test sites.
Thank you, Joshua. And I think we have enough sensibilities to hear that's clear that we're not going to expect you to do that at a site you already built. I'm talking about preparatory work and being prepared for emergencies and all the risks that have been presented here. And so what I heard is it's been tested on a cement parking lot. And three of us here on the panel are scientists ourselves, okay? We're not scientists in this area or engineers, but we know the difference between real-life condition testing and laboratory testing. Thank you.
I'd like to move on. So can you design automated fire suppression at the BESS perimeter and implement fall fail-safe settings for red flag days? In other words, what are your systems to protect you from wildfire that starts outside the site?
The, I think I may have mentioned this the other day, so forgive me if I'm missing the question. Please do reiterate. The design incorporates two primary protections against outside fires. And those are the setback, which again, has been designed specific to these site conditions based on our experience at other sites. And as well as the fencing, which would block, you know, if there was, say, a tumbleweed or something rolling in that had caught a spark. So those are the two methods that, again, we also feel most confident in. We design our systems first around layered passive mitigation measures because we don't have to rely on necessarily, you know, some other monitoring system to pick up what's happening and then act. And in this case, the setbacks in the fencing were reviewed heavily by independent experts and found to be sufficient.
Well, do you have any sensors that, you know, at the site to tell you when it's getting too hot?
The current design does not, well, we have sensors inside the enclosures, of course. But I think you're asking maybe about an ability to detect long before that. And at this site, we don't currently have plans for like a thermal IR camera. Of course, that would be a rather easy addition if that was a requirement from the HJ.
Okay, so you might include an infrared camera to let you know what's going on outside the site?
In the past, we've, when we've deployed that kind of technology, it's been a network of cameras so that you have full, you know, 360 view of the site. That's what we found to be the most reliable approach. Of course, again, we're happy to entertain any other requirements of the HJ.
Okay. I think the last question is what are recommended best practices for fire safety improvements and defensible space? What will be the, how often will you survey the defensible space to make sure weeds aren't growing up inside your defensible space, for example?
Joshua, do you want to take it? Otherwise, I can take it.
Yeah, I can initially respond. So the site will include four full-time O&amp;M operating personnel. And it is a part of their ongoing responsibilities to ensure that throughout the entire site, not just around the battery enclosures or the battery yard, that there's proper vegetation management and no, you know, accumulation of vegetative fuels. So this would be a continuous responsibility from our onsite staff to ensure that there's proper maintenance of the vegetation and the plant.
Okay. I think that's the end of fire and safety. Anyone have anything else they want to ask on fire safety?
So I have two questions. One, just since we're on this subject, in terms of our own inspection, do we, will our fire folks go once a quarter, once every six months to just make sure that they're on it and, you know, check the math? Is that part of something that we would do to make sure that that perimeter, not the whole facility, but really in that defensible space area?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Green, yes, the fire department will conduct annual inspections at these best facilities on campus. Anything from requiring paperwork on their fire protection systems, annual inspections, or servings of these systems to make sure that they are functioning properly, as well as the defensible space.
Wonderful. And then the question about fail-safe settings. Here in Santa Fe, maybe where you are, we have our local utility that disables power lines in high-wind days because of the risk of wires coming down or wires coming in contact with some brush and stuff. Is there a fail-safe setting within your system that says when there's a, you know, a red flag day, whatever we call it here, or high-wind day, that you disable anything to make sure that, you know, the wind that takes that tumbleweed or whatever it is, doesn't interfere with the power lines that could be exposed in that? Is there a setting that says, got to shut it down? It's, we can't really, one, because of wind, we'll carry a fire quickly, but also wind might start a fire?
Would you like to respond, Mike? Or otherwise, I can?
Why don't you start?
Okay. So I think there's a couple things there. So first, there's the solar trackers within the array. So they have sensors that if the wind, if the wind speed approaches a certain velocity determined on what's appropriate for the site, they go into what's called stow mode. Because obviously, you can understand that if it's early in the morning or late in the day and you have a larger tilt, that's kind of more wind loading. So there's a safety mechanism that is automatic that when the wind speed exceeds a certain determined amount, they go into stow mode, which is kind of the flat midday position. And then throughout the site, there are disconnects and auto-shutdown features if required. And then, of course, we work with the utility, in this case, it'd be P&amp;M, to respond to any dispatch signals or communications from them regarding grid conditions.
And that is, that would not only be on the connection to P&amp;M, but would be internal to your site, to in between your track, your panels and your batteries and all of your equipment internal. There is a fail-safe sort of shut it down for a few hours just until conditions improve?
Yes, that is correct. And if you just consider from an operations and maintenance perspective, there's also times we need to do work on certain segments of the array. And of course, we don't want to just like turn off the entire facility. We can isolate and disconnect certain subcomponents or subarrays and be able to do work. So yes, those features exist.
Okay, thank you.
If it's okay, I'll just add a couple of quick points. The, our standard for site design is to have--
Mike, one second.
My apologies. I've been notified that we are having some audio difficulties for those who are logged in. And we've been asked to allow for the system to be rebooted for those who are watching online. So we will have a brief pause in our meeting until we restart. I hope you'll hold your answer till then. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead and say it. We're going to have an announcement from our tech staff, particularly for those online. Thank you.
For all of our virtual attendees, we are going to restart the Teams meeting. The link is going to remain the same. So if you go to santafecountynm.gov/joinmeetings, you'll be able to join the meeting. Thank you. you'll be able to join the meeting. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, just to reiterate that. So that would be the 24th condition would be to upgrade or to require not the 30,000 gallon water tank, storage water tank, but the 60,000 gallon storage water tank.
Thank you. Commissioner Kukari Stone?
Thank you. So I'm trying to turn up. These are questions for staff and I'll hold them later. And we have some questions on fiscal impact on the county. What would that cost the county in general to upgrade that? Because we're upgrading in order to be have emergency fire preparedness for this commercial solar system, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kukari Stone, so the 60,000 gallon water tank would be provided by the applicant. That's not provided by the county.
Okay, okay. So it's the water tank. And just so that I'm clear, because again, I'm following what the cup standards are here and trying to determine risk and our preparedness. So we're going to be require a $60,000, 60,000 gallon tank. We have five, according to Chief L.A., five 2,000 gallon tankers that are mobile. Is that correct, what you said?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kukari Stone, we have upwards of 20 tenders already in circulation right now.
Okay, in 20. And then how many gallons per tender again? Just so I'm clear for the record.
2,000.
2,000, okay.
On average.
Okay. And are they all deployed at the same time? And if, I guess my question is, and it could be more for further study by the staff, and I don't want to take any more time with this, but for the record, I'd like to have more of an analysis on what the fire mitigation would require should we would have any types of sparks and fires would break out around the acreage and on the land. And do we have, and I would like further information, not necessarily today, but a deeper analysis because it wasn't in the reports. Should this break out, what would actually be required to respond appropriately, contain the fire on the outer perimeters to protect the communities? Because again, we're assessing risk and safety for the communities surrounding, because we have at least five communities, two schools, a community college, a detention center, and a prison. So these were the things that, again, assessing the outer containment we would need. So that's just a request.
Thank you. Moving on. Okay, thank you. The next questions are with regard to technology and safety comparisons. We've heard a lot about what has happened at Moss Landing. How does this proposed project differ from Moss Landing in terms of safety and protective measures? And what is the calculated risk thermal runway compared to other utility hazards? And if you don't have the immediate answer for the calculated risk, if you can direct me to your studies that have established such?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I also want to let you know and inform you that we do have Nicholas Bartlett online virtually, our subject matter expert, for any questions as well.
Thank you. The question is directed to the applicant.
Yeah, I'll take a stab at that. And again, I'm going to try not to be too deep because you've heard a lot on this. Please do ask any follow-ups. I'm happy to address any details. Not trying to hide anything. So the Moss Landing site was, it depends on exactly how you would characterize it, but I would argue it's about four generations of technology prior. It was designed prior to really full adoption of NFPA 55 or UL 9540, the standards that we continue to focus on because they have done so much for energy storage safety. That Moss Landing facility is built with a technology that's no longer available. It includes multiple battery modules. So if you can envision the racks that I was showing in my presentation on Monday, basically, you know, hundreds of those actually stacked double tall, right? So any sort of heat originating in one could actually transpire upward through many more modules. These were packed very densely inside an existing building that was kind of repurposed, as opposed to these which are purpose-built containers. At the site we've designed for Rancho Viejo, they include purpose-built enclosures that have the necessary protection specifically for this kind of circumstance. The, you know, not having designed the facility, I'm working on public information, but this, you know, pictures are available and you can see all this information there. I am aware that there were, there were two thermal events that occurred at Moss Landing that have been reported publicly in the, I believe this is the 2021-2022 timeframe, that stemmed from a water-based fire suppression system that had inadvertently activated. So I think in one circumstance, it was reported that a smoke, an HVAC system had failed and that set off a smoke detector which released the water, even though it wasn't a thermal runaway, but that then created a short circuit that led to a thermal runaway event. At least that's my understanding. So, you know, we don't have water-based suppression, certainly not internal to these enclosures. The enclosures are designed for external water. Obviously, we're going to have rain at these sites, potentially even flooding in localized areas, although we designed the site around to direct those waters elsewhere. But the outside of the enclosure is meant to be exposed to water. The inside is not needed. So no water would be necessary there. And then, you know, there's a number of other detailed differences, but the, actually, I'm aware of the form factor of the cells at these sites was different, different shape, different material. We actually have selected the material for this site, which is in line with the previous seven years of deployment that we've got over 1 gigawatt hours. That's a more rigid structure that prevents against thermal, basically thermal expansion, thermal expansion leading to some sort of short circuit. So that's also part of the passive safety protections. And then I'll just reinforce that every single one of these layers of mitigation that we have at these sites, all the way through, from the first steps of passive through the active thermal runaway propagation protection and all the sensors linked to that, has been field tested in over 1 gigawatt hour of deployments across at least half a dozen sites. I should get that number for you. But so those are, those have all been field tested in their formal environment. And then to your second question, which was the probability, what I would say is, we can consider probability of thermal runaway. For the sake, for the sake of how this site was designed, we have assumed it to be 100%. And what that means is that we don't actually expect that, right? We can talk about these things. There are, there are numbers from NFPA and a few others from several years ago that discuss 1 in 10 million cells. This is mostly referencing consumer electronics, which are produced, those batteries are produced in very different environments, at different scales. And what we've seen in the stationary storage industry, as well as the EV industry, that yet uses similar form factor of cells and similar chemistries, is that that rate is likely much lower. But 1 in 10 million is a number thrown around. We could assume it's exactly 100%. And that's why we have all these layer protections, because I'm not saying that we haven't had a thermal, that, I'm saying, excuse me, I'm trying to say that we have the, we have tested these protections in site, and we found that they stop the thermal runaway from proceeding into anything that would be detectable outside the enclosure. The thermal runaway propagation protection system is a last resort. And so if that system actually goes into thermal runaway, self-ignites, there's a fire, right? That's the only time there would really be a fire inside this enclosure. That is stopped before it becomes anything that could translate into a spark outside the enclosure, anything that could translate into any harm to nearby assets or personnel.
Thank you. Any follow-up to that question?
Could I just add just briefly? I mean, Mike has done an exceptional job explaining a lot of the technical differences and then also the view of probabilities there. Just to, again, further reiterate, because I know there's been a lot of discussion of Moss Landing throughout these hearings, and I am extremely sympathetic to the folks who lived in that area, who experienced that, to the fear that citizens hear when they see that visual imagery. It's entirely understandable to see that and to have concern. So I just, again, want to reiterate, first and foremost, to make it clear that Moss Landing is not an AES project. We're not an owner, we're not an operator. So it's not AES. And then additionally, as, you know, Mike referenced, it being built in a retrofitted turbine hall from a thermal generation plant, you know, this is a hyper unique facility that resembles less than 1% of all of the deployed energy storage systems in the country. So it is extremely unique. And if we talk about the safety mechanism of containment and how the industry and the proposed solution for this project is a containerized, uninhabitable, unmanned container, that is sized to 8 megawatt hours, each one of those, with all the design mechanisms and features. So if we then compare proportionally the size of the container for Moss Landing, which was 1,200 megawatt hours, that is 150 times more energy capacity within a single container, the turbine hall, versus our containers proposed for this. So just to put a bit of the massive distinction and scale of what Moss Landing represented and its incredibly unconventional architecture versus what has become an industry standard in which we are proposing here, it's a vast difference. In addition to it being built prior to UL 9540, prior to NFPA 855, all of the standards and codes that this facility would meet. So there's significant difference. And we just ask respectfully that that distinction be recognized.
Thank you. There have been a number of statements. We did ask this question during your testimony regarding other and presumably safer alternatives to sodium, I mean, to lithium ion. The recommendation for sodium ion batteries was suggested. Can you please provide or direct me to any evidence of increased safety or what would make the other batteries undesirable for this project? And how the safety measures that are being used for the lithium ion may be more protective than the sodium ion or the other batteries that have been suggested?
That's a, that's a great question, Madam Chair. The, one of the best resources for battery data and battery safety data comes right next door from Sandia National Labs. They've got a strong team there. So I am, I have not yet searched their database for information on sodium ion batteries, primarily because we've been talking with all of the primary suppliers of sodium ion batteries for the past few years, studying their technologies intently for specifically this claim and to try to understand how we can make use of those technologies. And what we're finding is that they are, unfortunately, they still pose thermal runaway hazard. They still have the potential to release similar gases. They use a similar electrolyte. And so the similar constituents that we've heard about, these different hydrogen, hydrogen-based compounds, hydrocarbons, can still be admitted. And they still, and because of that, the flammability of those gases is still there, which means that can also result in a fire hazard. They, you know, it does occur in different amounts of gases, different temperatures. What I've heard from, from the public, as well as the county, is a concern over, really not the amount, but the presence of a hazard, which is the right, I think that's the right question to ask. And unfortunately, sodium ion does still possess both explosion hazards and, or does, you know, present, rather, both explosion hazards and fire hazards, as do other forms of lithium ion-based batteries and, and many basic electrical systems. So anything that's going to be storing electrical energy, whether it's in chemical energy as a lithium ion battery, or whether it's in some sort of, could be, you know, mechanical storage of some kind, at the end of the day, it's going to and from electricity. And electricity also poses a fire hazard. But the thermal runaway is both present in sodium ion and lithium ion. Did I completely answer your question?
No, sir. Well, somewhat. If you could also, we are very much interested, or at least I am interested, in a relative risk comparison. If you have any data for that or, and make it available for our documents, I'd really appreciate that.
It is, yes, I'll look, I'll look for something. It is one-to-one, right? They both have 100% probably, you know, capability of, of fire and explosion. And so we would mitigate that with similar methods. I'll look for some data for you.
Thank you very much. We have a follow-up question from Commissioner Kukari Stone.
Thank you for your questions, Chair. I just want to add to our staff, if we could get any reports or published data from the Sandia National Labs and the scientists leading these analyses, so we could look and do our due diligence ourselves on the comparison. And then we can compare that to what AES submits to us. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this one is reiterative, but I will ask for a simple yes or no answer to this. Does your team include former or current Fluence personnel from the Moss Landing incident? Have you conducted internal debriefs on lessons learned? I guess it's a two parts, maybe more yeses, more no's, or one of the--
Josh, are you going to take that?
Yeah, so I want to make sure I respond in the correct manner. Can you rephrase the first part of the question regarding Fluence?
Does your team include former or current Fluence personnel from the Moss Landing incident?
No.
Okay. Have you conducted internal debriefs on lessons learned from that incident?
So again, I want to make clear Moss Landing--
Have you done any lessons learned conversations as a team?
It's a yes. I can affirm, I can affirm that.
Thank you, thank you. Will you consider--
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll look for some data for you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have a follow-up question from Commissioner Kokari Stone.
Thank you for your questions, Chair. I, I just want to add, uh, to our staff, uh, if we could get any reports or published data from the Sandia National Labs and the scientists leading these analysis, so we could look and do our due diligence ourselves on the comparison and then, um, we can compare that to what, um, AES submits to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think this one is reiterative, but I will ask, um, for a simple yes or no answer to this. Does your team include former or current fluence personnel from the Moss Landing incident? Have you conducted internal debriefs on lessons learned? I guess it's a two parts, maybe more yeses, more no's, or one of the...
Josh, are you want to take that or?
Well, yeah, so, um, I want to make sure I respond in the correct manner. Can you rephrase the first part of the question regarding fluence?
Does your team include former or current fluence personnel from the Moss Landing incident?
No.
Okay. Um, have you conducted internal debriefs on lessons learned from that incident?
So again, I want to make clear Moss Landing.
Have you done any lessons learned conversations as a team?
It's a yes. I can affirm, I can affirm that.
Thank you, thank you. Will you consider replacing lithium ion batteries with different technologies over the 35 year, years of the project? If there was something safer, more protective, more efficient that would come out?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. That concludes, are there any follow-up questions for this category from the commission?
I guess I'll just, um, what, what could trigger an upgrade of this system? Because considering it is nice, but, uh, actually doing it. Have you ever upgraded battery systems in another, uh, can you give an example of that in another facility? And then what triggered that upgrade if so?
Yes, um, we, so the, the, uh, the system that's designed today and the heritage I've been talking about, this, the seven-year history testing these exact systems in, in operations, um, in, in the actual commercial facilities, uh, across the southwestern US, across the northeast, across, um, uh, South America as well, and as in Hawaii. Um, that, those systems are, uh, have been designed around these, uh, multi-decade operations. And so those, uh, we've not had, uh, a need because they were designed to be cost-effective, um, uh, as well as, uh, uh, fully hazard mitigated. And so there was no need to change those out, uh, at least there hasn't been yet. Um, but we have had other facilities that were designed for other applications using other, uh, technologies, energy storage systems using lithium ion technologies, but, uh, past generations that were designed around use cases where their revenue, uh, was basically, like their, their target revenue was earned in a much shorter timeframe. Um, and really it was based around certain market services. In, in New Mexico, of course, this would be operated at the, uh, dispatch rather, at the behest of, um, of, uh, PNM. But in other areas where there's an open market, where, uh, maybe an owner operator of a, of a storage plant could bid in different revenue on different days to do different sorts of things, uh, they were, basically these batteries being charged and discharged at different amounts. Um, and they, because of that, in that separate use case, uh, and with this older technology, they degraded faster. And so, uh, they basically got to a point where they were, um, being used in one, in one application, uh, they degraded just like your cell phone would lose talk time over a couple of years. They also lost, um, uh, storage capacity. And then, uh, they were repurposed into something else. And at the, you know, by a certain point, they lost enough capacity to where it was useful to actually bring in, uh, an additional set of batteries or, um, or replace them. And so we had, we had done that in circum, circum, certain circumstances. Um, in that case, lithium ion was still, uh, uh, reviewed and selected to be the best choice. It was just a newer version of those batteries that were brought in. Um, but in this, in the case of this plant, uh, we expected to go through the full 25 year lifetime of that plant, uh, of the, of the storage facility and of the 35 year solar facility, um, we would, we would be reviewing the, um, uh, you know, the, the application usefulness throughout. And if there was a more cost-effective way to address the same level of safety, um, we would, uh, uh, we would, we would of course, uh, look to bring that in.
Okay.
Did I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You, you did answer, but I just want to be clear. It seemed like it was a financial decision and a performance, uh, energy performance decision and not specifically a safety thing. So if a new regime of UL standards and these batteries were performing, having defects in other, hopefully nowhere, but if there were known issues in other areas, uh, would you be willing to upgrade these to, you know, sort of warranty the system and make sure that, you know, um, like a recall sort of thing and make sure that a, a, a new safer system was implemented?
Yes, yes. I mean, we have conducted more minor recalls on systems, things like software upgrades or maybe some minor, um, hardware upgrades, but, uh, but we have not, we have not, again, I, I think we've designed the systems that in a way, uh, you could say it's been fortunate, but I think we've also, um, uh, if, designed these systems in a way where they, they haven't needed that. So in the hypothetical case that you presented, which may very well not be hypothetical at some point, of course, we'd be, uh, we would need to do that.
Great, thank you very much.
Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Just a quick question. Uh, this could be for legal or staff. Do we have any, um, mechanisms as we move to the next step? Let's just say this went to the cup, then it went to the next steps in full implementation. Is there any contractual, legal or procedural mechanisms in which the county could require upgrades? Because what I heard in expert testimony and evidence and what we've read is that the field is developing very rapidly and in the short timeframe of one or two years, we're going to see some modernization of even newer technologies that are, uh, will increase the safety, uh, decrease risk, uh, decrease fire, but as well would be cost-effective. So do we have any guardrails or mechanisms in the county? Because this is a 30-year relationship. So, you know, we have to think ahead.
Uh, Chair and Commissioner Kokari Stone, I mean, we're, we're operating here under the, the conditional use, uh, permit process. And so, you know, again, the, the vetting, as you all are fully aware, uh, is, you know, of the design of the project as a whole is going to be, you know, at the front end. And there is not a, a contract. I mean, I know that some of the parties withstanding have, have been inquiring, is there some ongoing relationship, contractual relationship between the county and AES? Not that staff are aware of. And so again, I think it would need to be a question for fire personnel about what, what, what is the scope of their annual inspections? And then a conversation between land use and the applicant about what, you know, what, what conditions need to be included in, in, in the permit to, to allow, uh, for, for what you're, you're, you're inquiring into.
So, I'm sorry, we're, Dominic, were you going to add anything or? So just so I'm clear, because we have to think ahead, 30-year relationship, it's three generations. How the county code and our process right now that we have in place doesn't give us any guardrails to in five years ask for an upgrade to the most recent technology that decreases the risk and hazards?
Chair and Commissioner Kokari Stone, the, the county has ordinance authority, right? So you, so the county could, I mean, assuming it's not preempted by, otherwise preempted by state or federal law, if, if it, if it became clear that the, that it was unsafe to operate batteries of this nature, um, within the county limits for, for purposes of protecting the health and safety of county, uh, residents, the county could adopt an ordinance prohibiting these batteries from being used, uh, at a, at a best facility within, within county limits.
Thank you, Walker. That seems a bit more complicated. It seems like we would want to be more proactive rather than, um, that's kind of a catch-22 for AES as well. We want to think, so we say go ahead, green light, use what you have with the current technology. We have a 30-year lifespan, um, but we're saying later we might determine they're unsafe. Or do we have guardrails to determine that? Cause what I also heard in the last two days and read is, and when you look at National Association of Counties, uh, but there's 3,140 counties in the nation, so other counties are grappling with this. And we, the, the theme and the trend nationally is we're not keeping up with the solar energy. Every testimony, everyone's 100% on board that solar is the way to go. There's no, this is not what we're questioning.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, if I may interrupt, we're in question mode? Okay.
Question, okay, so the question is, so we could later do an ordinance or is there another guardrail in the conditional use permit that would allow us to, um, have language that guarantees that we modernize with the latest technology like every three to five years? Thank you, Chair, I understand.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think one way to look at this may be the way a lot of other land use requirements work, which is that you build what you build at the time with, using the best technology, the best, the up-to-date, what's current with code, materials, structures, et cetera. But at the point at which any modifications need to be made, you're subject to whatever the current code or the best practices are at that time. So that's kind of a standard way of doing things. Like, for instance, if you remodel a building that was built before ADA requirements, so it's not accessible, you remodel it and you have to create ways to make it accessible because that's the rule that's in place now. So I think there is a little bit of a built-in guardrail, um, and I'm not sure, you know, we can work with legal staff to just, we can't really make that a condition, but we can make it clear that at the time at which any of the components need to be upgraded, that the company will, of course, deploy the best technology, the safest technology that's available.
Thank you so much. And so it's just a question, is it a good faith agreement at this point if we move to the next step? There's no, there's no guarantees or mechanisms?
We have both the response from legal and?
Chair and Commissioner Kokari Stone, I mean, the, as the applicant, I, I won't speak for the applicant. I think they've presented to you all what they understand to be the, the, the life term of these batteries. And so I think as the, you know, for, the, the question for you all is, you've, you've, you understand the, the proposal. They, they are proposing, I believe, a 20 to 35-year life term of these batteries. And so I, you know, I think that it's ultimately a conversation between land use, you all, I mean, and, and the applicant about whether that aspect of the proposal is, is acceptable.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Are we ready to move on to the next section? Yes, okay, wonderful, thank you. Um, so this is, uh, in regards to environmental and community impact. What measures protect the groundwater, night sky and wildlife passage?
Sure, I can initiate the response to that. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Green. Uh, so we do propose utilizing wildlife friend, uh, friendly fencing. Um, that's to avoid, for example, you know, an antelope or a gazelle jumping over, being, um, you know, caught in barbed wire. So, um, typically this also allows, you know, small cutters to, to get through the fence, but we, we do have as part of our proposal, wildlife, uh, friendly fencing. Um, I think again, it's worth noting the exceptional collaboration with the hosting landowner to set aside 10 times more acreage than the footprint of the facility in perpetual conservation through the transfer development rates. Can you please, uh, remind me the rest of the question?
Yeah, no problem. Uh, night sky precautions?
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, these facilities would employ motion censored or most motion detected downward cast lighting at limited locations, uh, effectively at the inverter pads, um, throughout the, the subarray of the solar array, um, also at the battery energy storage facility and the substation. So this would not be, uh, perpetual light throughout the, the nighttime. It would be there based on, um, you know, service needs at a late hour or motion detection for security purposes. So there should not be a significant contribution to light pollution. It'd certainly be certainly less than a residential setting. Um, I know you, you mentioned one or two more things.
So the, you know, the last one was regarding groundwater and more specifically, uh, what protections would you have for the groundwater and will you use a lined protective catchment pond for any water, uh, or chemicals that are, uh, deployed?
Um, so I'll initiate the response. If Mike wants to add anything, he certainly can. Um, so I think it's, you know, worth reiterating that this is a solid-state facility. Um, there is not liquids in any substantial quantity circulating throughout the site. So these are solid componentry. Um, yes, there is, um, uh, within the battery cells, um, the electrolyte, um, that Mike could speak much more to, um, that is fully contained, uh, within the, uh, battery modules, which is then fully contained within IP55, uh, container. So these are leak resistant. Um, obviously they need to be hyper-conditioned for, for cooling and, and temperature and humidity. Um, so they're very well sealed to protect from outside elements and therefore they also guard against any, um, leakage from, from without. Um, and, uh, I will say that, uh, transformers, um, are often lubricated with, with oil. Uh, there are containment, um, for where transformers are sited, um, but otherwise there is no means or medium for groundwater contamination from this facility.
Okay, uh, related to that, for stormwater detention, there was, uh, some discussion about fewer arroyos to the north and the south of this project. Is there any, uh, like check dams or any, uh, flood control improvements that can be put in to, uh, sort of make it less flood prone?
Yeah, so we fully do analyze, um, the hydrology of a site. So, uh, we conducted a hydrology, um, study, um, and as you may notice from review of the site plan, we are set back and avoiding, um, the arroyos of significance and, uh, otherwise drainage features. Um, and if you also, uh, review the site plan, um, in the northeast corner, just due west of the battery energy storage facility, there is a proposed, uh, storm, uh, stormwater management, um, basin of 200 feet by 200 feet.
Okay, um, I might recommend some, uh, some improvements to the arroyos just to slow down the water as it, uh, moves from your site into those arroyos, but. Um, okay, second question, what noise impacts from the best system, uh, and solar panel trackers at various distances and how will you mitigate it? So what is the, you know, how does the, uh, noise impact at a half mile and a mile away or to the closest residences?
Uh, yes, so I'll initiate the response and if any members of my team care to elaborate, I, I certainly welcome that. Um, so we did provide, uh, the noise study, um, to the county and again voluntarily upon a learning of the concerns of the community. Um, so we're of course, uh, thankful for the expression of those concerns and, and of course look to satisfy them via, um, independent study. Um, so I'm also just bringing up the slide that has a, a depiction of that. That was slide 39, um, the report that we updated at the request of the county to include 24-hour, uh, in situ or in the field, uh, monitoring. Um, that was one reason why it was submitted after the initial, um, uh, document deadline was that it was a request from the county, I think on July 25th, that we performed this monitoring. So we were very reactive to deploy, um, to the field to collect, uh, field data. Um, so if you look in that report or also on the, the slide 39, um, you can see a visual representation, um, of the sources of noise. Predominantly those are the, um, the PV inverters and the best inverters and then the HVAC units and chillers, uh, at the, uh, battery energy storage system. Um, so you can see the visual representation of the red kind of asterisks or stars, um, and then you can see kind of concentric circles, um, going, emanating out from those of what the DBA, uh, level would be. Um, so it's a very helpful graph, um, or chart to be able to review. Um, and that represents precisely, um, the answer to your question of what the level would be at a given distance. You can see that the El Dorado community, uh, has zero, um, uh, reach of, of any noise. Um, and the, uh, only one which sees, uh, any, uh, increase is the, the singular residence in the northeast of the San Marcos community, um, but that increase in noise is below what's otherwise deemed, um, detectable, which is the, the five, uh, decibels. So, um, does that answer your question?
I think so, thank you. Uh, next question is construct, uh, can construction be limited, uh, specifically to heavy traffic, uh, and transportation trucks during construction, uh, times, uh, to after eight or nine AM? Uh, and then preclude work during dark hours? Um, so in the winter, days are shorter? And that no artificial lighting be used, utilized during construction, uh, during nighttimes to protect and not make a 24-hour construction site or even after 5:00 PM when it's dark at 5:00 in the winter?
Um, so I think I, I heard a few things there. So the standard, um, course of work hours is, is generally, uh, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Of course, we typically reserve or would request, um, the right to be able to operate from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Um, certainly in winter hours when, uh, it's dark early, you know, safety is a number one priority. Uh, construction generally does not continue into nighttime hours unless there was a specific, um, task at hand which, uh, would be better performed at that. Uh, specifically, I'm thinking of when you pour concrete, um, and you, uh, want, you know, cooler temperatures and, and need to observe that, or sometimes there may be some electrical work that requires continuous. So it's, it's a limited nature, um, but typically, yes, we, we are only working within a standard working hours during the daytime.
And then specifically to heavy truck traffic at the, uh, rush hour, 8:00 AM hour, so the trucks are accessing the site, um, between 7:00 So the trucks are accessing the site between 7:00 and 9:00, or 7:00 and 8:00 at least?
So you're requesting that we would not have heavy trucks enter the site between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m.?
Correct. Like, so pour your concrete at 9:00 a.m., stage stuff the night before if you need to have stuff delivered for the, to be onsite the morning before. But I can think of a, you know, a parade of concrete trucks showing up and just disturbing the neighborhood for hours at 7:00 a.m.
Yes, actually, as a part of our water supply report or the water budget that we've updated and provided, we are willing to schedule outside of peak traffic hours.
Okay. And including construction during construction phase?
Yes, heavy equipment, yes.
Great. Fabulous. Thank you. And then lastly, in this section, I think, yep, is what sort of screening trees could be deployed and planted and maintained to protect the San Marcos neighborhood, which seems to have the most visual impact of this area here? You know, specifically, I wouldn't recommend doing it right up against the homes there to give them some perspective there, but maybe, you know, a few hundred yards away in that open space area that the common landowner might have to provide some deciduous as well as evergreen buffering?
Sure. I think it's a fair idea and proposal, and I see the logic in proposing something of that nature. I would like to say that there's already been a condition made on the permit that we use paneled fencing in the southwest corner. As a part of the community feedback, we already modified or designed to fully remove the array from the north of the San Marcos community. So anybody on the northern periphery looking straight north from their backyard would not have any visual obstruction. Only if someone were to look at a minimum 1/3 of a mile to the northeast, would it be visual. And we've already committed as a condition to do paneled fencing. Their nearest residence already has vegetative screening around their home. So from their home, they would already not be able to see the facility. They would have to walk to the corner of their property line 1,000 feet to be able to see it. But that's where the paneled fencing should already provide a visual buffer. Utilizing vegetation, as you suggest, especially coniferous trees. If ongoing water usage is a concern, that is going to increase water consumption. And generally, we find we reseed with native vegetative mixes appropriate for the environment. And so we would be incorporating that as a part of the soil revegetation plan. But typically, including, you know, significant bushes and trees in desert environments has never, in my experience, proved to actually be successfully established, given that it's kind of out of the appropriate kind of environment for them.
Just to follow up, there are native trees that can be established with a few years of watering, whether it's their slow-growing pinones or some other even non-native trees that can be used as a landscape buffer. Just to give a little bit of a, an added level of that. But thank you for answering those questions, and I'll pass this on for the next section if anybody else has some questions.
Madam Chair?
We certainly invite the recommendation of any specific species. I was just speaking from experience.
Sure, of course.
The success of the typical establishment.
And I understand the water issue, and it's great that you understand it as well. But sometimes, water is necessary to achieve a goal here. Thanks.
We have a question from Commissioner Kokari.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Green, I also just want to add to that point that on that southwest corner of the property, there's a pretty significant prairie dog colony that is being preserved in that area.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Chair. My question is for the staff as we think about the environment and community impact. If noise and other, and lighting and traffic are violated, remind us for the public, what's the process and how we do monitoring, oversight, regulation, and penalties?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone. So there are mitigation, you know, issues that could be put in place for them to come into compliance if anything does, you know, get reported to the staff or to code enforcement. There are, you know, certain things that we can be done. And that's one of the reasons why we have our third-party consultant, Glorita Geoscience, and their Sound Division reviewing the sound study to see what those mitigations could possibly be.
And I will add, anything that is in violation of SLDC standards can be reported to our Code Enforcement Division, and they will go out and investigate.
Thank you so much. And all five of us are very aware of all these calls and reports that come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Commissioner Johnson starts, I do want to say for the record that I take some issue with the first question regarding budgets and expected revenues. Understanding and respecting that environmental commerce is a respected trade, if you will, a field. Maybe not trade, but field. And that if there are issues that are proprietary, that are not of safety, health, and community protection, environmental protection, that those questions, I fail to see the relevance if all of the safety and health measures have been, and environmental protection measures have been taken. But with that, I will move the question to Commissioner Johnson.
Understood, Madam Chair. Thank you. Thanks to everyone for being here today. I'm going to ask some questions about project details and oversight. The first is a question about the company, of your company's structure. I am a little bit confused because in the first presentation, you sort of differentiated between AES, Fluence, which has been brought up, and AES Clean Energy, which I understand you all to be a part of. Could you briefly describe that structure to all of us so that we can understand? Because I think some of the mistrust is rooted in AES Clean Energy may not have had certain safety issues, but other associated companies have. So I think clarifying that would be helpful for us. Thank you.
Yeah, most certainly. And thank you for the question, Commissioner Johnson. I'll try not to get too far into the weeds and keep it high level. But if you would require further explanation, happy to do so. So the AES Corporation is the parent corporation. They own several business entities, not just in the U.S., but also globally. AES Clean Energy is a wholly-owned subsidiary of the AES Corporation. So we are a specific business unit that is focused on development, ownership, and operation of clean energy assets, predominantly solar, wind, and storage within the United States. So there are other country units and other business units that are owned by AES but operate elsewhere with different missions.
So would it be fair to say that AES Clean Energy focuses on the solar portfolio, maybe other renewable sources, clean sources?
Correct. Yes, that's entirely correct.
You can continue.
Yes. And then I think you may have been asking this, and I also heard Fluence, so I'll address that. So then Ranch Viejo Solar LLC, which is the entity that is ultimately seeking the permit here, that is what we then call a project-specific company or project company. That may seem strange to folks that are unfamiliar with the industry, but it's absolutely universal practice in the renewable energy industry, and it's also common in the real estate industry. But the reason that you set up a dedicated project company is that, is for purposes of project finance. We provide our equity investment into the project, but we also, because of the long-duration contracts, we predominantly finance these projects based on a power contract. If we do not have a power contract, we essentially do not have a project. And so once you are successful in securing a 20- or 25-year power contract, you, and then based on the industry confidence in the overall energy production, there is confidence in how much revenue that contract will generate. So you can then go to the market and you can highly leverage these projects, meaning that you essentially finance much of the project based on debt issued by a bank. And then you also utilize investment tax credits or tax equity investors. And so you have various forces, sources of financing that are backed on a power contract that is tied specifically to the project entity. And so all that is to say that there is a benefit to creating an entity that is specific to the project, that is specific to its permits, to its power contracts, to its interconnection agreements, so that the financing structures and those that are directly invested in it have a clean vehicle in which to invest in, because they would not otherwise just give all their money to AES when AES owns hundreds of projects and operates utilities, et cetera. So you create this entity that is specific to the project. That all being said, it's a wholly-owned entity by AES, and AES is ultimately also responsible for this project company. So I know there's been some assertion that the idea of a project company is to shield the parent from anything else, that that's actually not the case. It's predominantly a finance-driven entity or a vehicle for the project. Lastly, in relation to Fluence, you can kind of think of Fluence as a cousin, in which AES Clean Energy and Fluence have a common grandfather, right? But it's worth pointing out that Fluence is actually not an AES subsidiary. It was a joint venture between AES and Siemens. It has its own governance structure. It has its own mission statement. It operates in complete independence. And actually, I believe AES has both minority equity stake and minority governance rights in Fluence. I have worked at AES for 10 years. I've never once spoken to somebody at Fluence. So it is a completely different business entity of which there is a thread of shared kind of family, as I said, for a better metaphor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, it's real short. You said Ranch Viejo LLC is wholly owned by AES. Are there any other partners in the LLC?
My understanding is no. I would request that perhaps I follow up on the technicalities of it all, but it's otherwise an entity for which AES is wholly responsible. I would maybe ask to be able to follow up to ensure with my legal if there's not some minority stake that is kind of carrying on further. I know that there's, some of these structures can be more complicated, and there could be some side investment that I would want to confirm for the record. But my understanding is it's, you know, it is a wholly-owned subsidiary by AES.
Yeah, I appreciate the complete, or checking into that because I've been involved in the formation of LLCs that own affordable housing projects. And usually, there's two or three partners, even though one is responsible. So yeah, if we can know whoever else involved in Ranch Viejo LLC, I appreciate that.
Yes, I'll see if I can actually request that and have confirmation by the end of this session.
That'd be great. Thank you. And we would like to make that a matter of the public record. So this relates to the question, the sort of preamble by the chair. We are interested in sort of brief details on the construction budget, the expected GRT revenue, and local energy sale income. Just so that, you know, a lot of the testimony that we heard, there is sort of a suspicion about a large entity such as AES coming in and profiteering. So I think that might help to inform or alleviate some of those concerns.
Yes, just allow me one second.
And if that, I think we'd like to request that information in writing.
Okay, so I heard a few requests, financial requests. So for one, I would like to state that specifics generally are of competitive nature, right? The specific cost of the facility, the specific revenues. If I tell you specifically our revenue expectation, you could back and the expected generation that we've shared, and you could determine what our confidentially submitted pricing to PNM and last RFP is. So I would respect some degree of sensitivity or confidentiality around those numbers. But I would say that it's a very competitive industry that we operate in. Margins are very thin. AES is not targeting specific monetary return by like a number figure. We have a hurdle rate. We have an internal rate of return, which our board approves for projects to achieve when we bid pricing into a competitive procurement. And effectively, every cost that gets added on to a project, every condition, you know, for example, adding in, you know, a perimeter road in cooperation with the fire department adds cost. If we did not have to add that road in, AES is not taking a higher profit. We are lowering the PPA rate or the energy rate that we're going to bid into the RFP. So what I'm trying to say is, there's just a number, like a percentage number, that we are looking to achieve on our investment, which I would say is very typical for the industry. No, there's not a single company that is earning 2X what another one is. We all are operating on very minimal margins to be competitive because there's a lot of project opportunities out there. And effectively, any savings or any additional costs get directly translated into what the final cost of energy is. And our return threshold stays the same. Hopefully, that makes some sense.
That is helpful. Do you have a follow-up?
We have a follow-up from Commissioner Green?
I do. I'll try to maneuver this in a proprietary way for you, but to get the answers we want. Construction budget. So there was discussion of an IRB. And so if you go down an IRB route, that foregoes Santa Fe County's revenue on a lot of the GRT in that space. My understanding is one of this. And so at some level, you're going to have to report what your construction budget is going to be. So, you know, what is the order of magnitude? And are you, so one, what is the order of magnitude? Doesn't have to be full-on detail, but is this a $200 million project? Is it a billion-dollar project? And then how much? So that's the first question. Then the second one is, if you were going to go down the IRB, we are going to then, at a later date, be asked to give up that revenue when you're coming to us now saying you will get GRT construction benefit from this, but you're now leaving out the opportunity for, to come back and say, "Well, we'd like to get an IRB, and Santa Fe County will basically pay for that."
Yes. So thank you for the question, Commissioner Green. It's a very thoughtful one. I'm not an IRB expert, although I've worked significantly with New Mexico-based council who's experienced with IRBs. We have already initiated industrial revenue bond process in Bernalio County for a battery energy storage facility that we permitted there. So I am already practically experienced. And my understanding, the best of my understanding, is actually the gross receipts tax exemption that is eligible through qualification of an IRB exempts the state tax gross receipts tax for applicable renewable energy equipment. That is why we are still citing in our presentation that our estimates, based on our capital expense budget, is that the county would still collect $3 million in upfront gross receipts tax. And there would be an additional million that would still go to the state based on equipment that's not exempt as a renewable energy component. So the, and I am familiar that we need to provide a budget for an industrial revenue bond application. And we would provide that. Generally, the experience has been that you provide a number in excess of what you think you ultimately would spend. And this would be a self-funded IRB, so we would be not asking for any public proportion of the financing. So we would fully finance it ourself, utilizing the approved mechanisms within IRB structure. But we would provide a number. It just likely would be conservative based on what we ultimately expect to spend. But to address your question of magnitude, yes, it's a facility that would estimatedly cost us in excess of $200 million, likely less than $250 million.
Perfect. And then in the, I understand these sort of like process things. So we get this, or if you were to receive this approval, you would then go forward and apply to PNM for that contract. And that becomes another hurdle or milestone that you need to get to to say, "Go, no, go." Am I correct in that?
Commissioner Green, you're entirely correct. Project development is a puzzle. You need all the pieces to have a complete picture achieving. Achieving, or with your consideration today, if you decide to grant us a conditional use permit, that is a significant piece to the puzzle. It advances the maturity of the project, it also makes it more marketable, because the project is now less, or it's further de-risked as far as its ability to execute, so that does, yeah, contribute to its marketability. But ultimately, as I mentioned before, we do need a power contract. So it very well may be that this project is granted a CUP and is never built, if we are unsuccessful in ultimately contracting it.
Okay, so that goes to the PNM aspect, is like you're targeting, as has been mentioned, quote-unquote, targeting PNM, but ultimately, if PNM doesn't do it, you could find another purchaser, but this is built, kind of purpose-built for a PNM-type of customer?
Yes, so currently, today, PNM is largely the only customer that this project could sell power to. In other states, there are what we call wholesale markets, in which you can openly transact on a daily basis, and you can even transact with, you know, a Meta, or an Amazon, or a Google, and be able to quote-unquote "sell them" energy into the grid. It's a bit more kind of accounting, but it does help transfer renewable energy credits, so there's a mechanism to sell to various customers. But as currently exists in New Mexico, this project is located in the PNM service territory. The only way we could potentially sell power to a Tri-State, or to El Paso Electric, or an SPS, well, SPS is in a completely different, they actually are in a wholesale market, they're in the Southwest Power Pool, but we would effectively then have to pay wheeling, it's called a wheeling cost, to send the power through the transmission system, and that just frankly is never economical. There is, it's still new and burgeoning, but you see with the growth of data centers in different regions, there being specific tariffs set up where, because these customers are requesting significant amounts of power in a given location, you know, they're not your typical business or industry that, you know, wants to interconnect in the grid and receive, you know, power, they're asking for 100, 150 megawatts, 200 megawatts of power, which the utility then says, okay, that's a lot more power than we perhaps currently have a generation mix for. There can be a tariff in which they, with PNM or with a utility, can solicit specific generation that would be tied to a specific customer to address their new demand request. So I believe Meta has contracted through this arrangement with PNM for their Los Lunas facilities. This has not been transacted on significantly, but that is currently the only other mechanism in which this project could potentially market itself and contract for power supply outside of the PNM RFP. The only caveat I'll add is that Colorado, for example, currently doesn't have the wholesale market, but they have a state mandate now to create one by 2030, at which point, you know, you can engage in these wholesale market transactions, transact with other corporations. This is a trend that's growing throughout the West, so one day, New Mexico may also introduce a wholesale market, but as of today, there's not a means to do so.
Thank you for explaining that. And just for the record, you are not in conversations with Meta or any data center, this is, you don't have any discussions with PNM, you know of the PNM RFP, and you don't have any discussions with any big data farms in the state to potentially wholesale to them?
There's not currently any solicitations outside the PNM RFP that this project has engaged in.
Great, thank you.
Okay, to continue, thank you for that detail. There was some discussion yesterday from parties withstanding about a pending sale of AES, what provisions ensure continuity in the project, specifically regarding safety standards and disposal commitments, if, in the instance of a sale of the parent company, or some radical change in leadership.
So I'll, thank you for the question, Commissioner Johnson, I'll answer it in two parts. The first part is, I cannot publicly comment on any potential sale of AES, there's no information I have on it, there's nothing that's been communicated internally, so there's only what is perhaps in public media, and I can't speak to whether there's veracity or weight to that. What I will try and assure you with in the second part of your question is, if this project company, this actually also is a good explanation for why there are project-specific entities or project-specific companies, is because they can be sold. That's not AES's model, we are owner-operators. It is a model that is employed by others, and it could theoretically take place, although it's not intended to. But any permits granted to that project entity, any power contracts, any lease agreements, for example, carry with the project company. So if there was some ownership change in AES, all of the conditions that are outlined in the conditional use permit grant for this project would carry with it. So it would not all of a sudden nullify, if there was a new owner of the facility, that the prior conditions were not applicable to them. So for the lifetime of which this project would exist, or be operating under the permit, regardless of who the owner is, those same conditions and requirements and legal requirements would persist.
Okay, thank you.
We have a follow-up question from Commissioner Kukari Stone.
Yes, thank you. This is just going along the business aspect of the questions. I want to manage, it sounds like our community from testimony, as well as other presentations in the last two days, discussed this number of 200 jobs. On your other sites with comparable sizes, how many jobs during construction phase, on the average, did you have versus operational jobs after the fact? Because I want to manage community expectations and get a sense of, because this has been touted a lot in the last day, oh, it's going to create jobs.
Most certainly, and thank you for the question, Commissioner Kukari Stone. First, I want to go back to the question about the project equity ownership. So I was able to confirm with my internal legal counsel, so AES Clean Energy is, in fact, the 100% equity interest owner of Rancho Viejo Solar. The reason that I wanted to caveat my question or confirm is that the higher AES Clean Energy business unit level, there is another investor, Aimco, who owns 25% of AES Clean Energy. So that is why I wanted to ensure and confirm my response to you. But Rancho Viejo Solar is 100% owned by AES Clean Energy. To your question, Commissioner Kukari Stone, so yes, it is our current estimate, based on projects of similar size and scope, that we would employ approximately 200 construction workers throughout the course of construction. It may be a little less, it may be more, but that is a very reasonable estimate on our part. And then during the operation of the facility, we fully expect to employ full-time O&amp;M staff making six-digit salaries.
Okay, thank you. And how many full-time staff again was that, with the six-digit salaries?
Four O&amp;M personnel would be anticipated during the operation phase of the facility.
Okay, besides the six-figure salaries and jobs, are there any other jobs?
There's always the possibility that we need to contract some additional service, if our direct O&amp;M personnel would not perform that themselves, so there may be some consultant or engineer or additional service provider, you know, that may be called to the site, but as far as AES staff, it's the four is our estimate.
Okay, so the 200 jobs, what duration do you anticipate for the construction? So this would be jobs during construction, so what's that time period people would be hired?
Correct, so, so we anticipate a construction timeframe of approximately one year for the significant construction work. You often have commissioning tasks that may go on longer, but your kind of physical efforts of moving ground and installing things is largely ceased at that point, so I think the year is an appropriate expectation. That being said, AES is not the, we are not the civil contractor or the electrical contractor, we hire an engineering procurement and construction company, who then may also hire subcontractors, and so there may be certain jobs for specific tasks, for specific subcontractors, that may not be the entire year. And so there could be some variability within whether a particular construction worker is there for the whole duration of the facility's construction, or just a specific scope, whether it's civil, or electrical, or mechanical in nature.
Okay, thank you. And with the construction jobs, if they're temporary, one year, do you offer insurance or any type of employee benefits to these workers? Or also, any type of insurance should they get injured on their job?
So anyone who is on our construction sites is required to have appropriate levels of insurance. AES has insurance and benefits for all of its employees, we do not pay for the insurance or the benefits of our contractors or subcontractors.
Okay, what are the salaries or wages, the wages of construction workers? Per hour?
I would have to, if you actually give me a few minutes, I may be able to bring up what is an estimate.
Sure.
But I otherwise would request to be able to follow up with what an average salary is. Again, that's going to depend on scope, if you're, you know, someone that is driving piles, versus someone that's installing the solar panels, versus someone that's wiring the electrical work, there's going to be a significant variance.
Okay, so based on their expertise, and just trying to manage some of the expectations that were thrown out there, thank you.
Sure, if you'd like, I can try and find this estimated hourly wage, or I can follow up after the hearing today.
Follow up is fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I continue?
We have Commissioner Green.
So just to follow up on that change of control concept, AES may be very well capitalized, and, you know, great bond rating and everything like that, but you could sell this in a variety of ways. And so this could go into a bunch of, a pile of junk debt, right? You know, the junk bond sort of ways of things, you could have, you could sell this to a company that has tons of liabilities, that knows that it's going to dispose of this stuff, like a 3M or a DuPont, that suddenly had a bunch of PFAS litigation behind it. And so the concern that I have, and I think that we have, is that if this does change control, is there, you know, a sufficient bonding for the cleanup and for any, you know, any catastrophe that, God forbid, happens? And so I think, I'm wondering if there are any triggers that could be applied to this in a way that says, well, if you do sell this, and AES isn't the parent company any longer of this asset, that there is some additional bonding restriction or obligation for cleanup or for insurance policies in this?
Yep, great question, Commissioner Green. So actually, at the request of the county, we did provide a decommissioning plan for this project, and that included a cost for decommissioning. I believe the total estimated cost in current dollar figures was approximately 8.8 million. If you factor in salvage value, the net value, I believe, was about 7.2 million, I believe, and perhaps Matt Gordon, my permitting manager, could confirm, or county staff could confirm. I believe there is expectation or condition that we would post a decommissioning bond. I don't believe the terms of that have necessarily been finalized, or the requested amount, but it's otherwise a very common commitment and responsibility that we employ on many of our projects. So it's certainly something that we would be amenable to posting, which is a decommissioning bond. And again, if that is a condition or a feature of the permit, regardless of the change of ownership of the facility, it would still have to adhere with the decommissioning bond requirements for the facility.
Great, and then to follow up on Commissioner Kukari Stone's question, the four O&amp;M positions would be six-figures salaries on those? They're all in the above $100,000 a year?
That's correct. When I asked my O&amp;M director about these salaries, the average salary was about $165,000.
Great. And then lastly, do you use union workers for the electrical workers, teamsters, or construction workers on, do you require that of your subcontractors or your contractors?
So ultimately, that our selected construction firm, general contractor, is the one that we provide the discretion in certain areas where there are any contractual requirements, you know, for example, there's some state power contracts, or others that you, that may have requirements that you utilize a labor, a union labor. If there's not otherwise a binding contract insisting upon that, it is a decision that we ultimately defer to our general contractor to source the best labor that they feel is required to safely and successfully build the project. So it's neither a yes or a no. We've utilized union workers on some projects, we do not utilize them on all, and ultimately, it's a decision that lives with our general contractor unless we insist upon them to utilize union labor.
Okay, and then do you use, do you create or require your subcontractors and contractors to utilize or offer internship opportunities? We have a relatively robust program at our community college, but on-the-job training is the best training there is, and wondering if there's an obligation to incorporate that into your contracts of, you know?
Yeah, it quite often is, and in fact, under the current investment tax credit regime, which is under federal review at the moment, and is subject to change, there was a prevailing wage requirement in order to secure the full value of investment tax credits, which is essential, or central to renewable energy financing. I believe that had a 30% requirement for apprenticeships or traineeships in the workforce. In addition to that, New Mexico itself, I believe, has a requirement for workforce training and apprenticeships, which I believe is also around 30%. So this, if my precise quotations are not accurate, we do intend to utilize what is required by the state and by federal requirements for apprenticeships. And in fact, we actually have met with the community college, and we are aware of their goal to actually develop their solar training, and we have been in discussions about supporting the development of that program in very specific regards, to help ensure that there's a local supply of labor that can be utilized for this project. And we've already contributed to other workforce development in New Mexico to date.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, continuing on, a question that I had about the disposal bond was asked, if commissioners have additional follow-up, there'll be time for that. Can you explain to us, so that we have more clarity, on what price fixing agreements are, how they work, and what the sort of ramifications for energy consumers are when those agreements are reached?
Could I ask for you to please restate the beginning part of that question?
So what's a fixed-price agreement? That's something that is proposed between PNM, I think, helping us understand what they are?
Okay, yeah, so I believe you're in reference to the language that I featured in my presentation, talking about long-term fixed-price supply of energy. So that, what I was trying to communicate through that is that you can either bid a project where you say, the energy is going to cost X, and it's going to escalate at 2% over the course of the following 20 years, you could almost consider that fixed price as well, because it's, you have the certainty of what it's going to cost. What is currently typical practice, and I believe what PNM also requested in their RFP, was that they don't want to see escalation, they want to see, what is the price for 20 years for you to deliver the energy in the capacity that you say you will? And so that means that the price of their energy or capacity in year one is going to be the same price as it is in year 20. And so that is unlike, for example, the operation of coal plants, the operation of natural gas facilities, where you don't have a renewable fuel supply that is provided to you by the sun every day, you have to continuously contract the source of fuel. And so there can be price variability over the course of 20 years, which is why we see fluctuations in the price of natural gas. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that does, and in the second scenario, does inflation factor into that, or is it actually a flat rate across the lifespan?
Yeah, so if we were successful in contracting with PNM in this RFP, and they pick our proposal, it is, inflation has zero impact. We could see, God forbid, 40% inflation every year for the next 20 years, and if we execute in our contract and build the facility, the price of the power that we supply is the same for the next 20 years, because we made an assumption and contracted based on what we know our capital cost to be today. And as I noted, we financed the project fully off of that power contract, so we know, I have a very good idea of how much revenue we'll receive, and we can cover our capital cost upfront with that. So inflation in years down the road would not have an impact on the price of the power that we're supplying.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful for understanding the Okay, thank you. That's helpful for understanding the contractual details. What are the ramifications for consumers? What could consumers in Santa Fe expect to see?
Um, so it's indirect, um, and I can't speak for P and M, but my general understanding is that investor-owned utilities are regulated, in this case, by the Public Regulatory Commission. And there's generally a, I think it's often 10%, but I'm not going to speak for, uh, the PRC in New Mexico, but there's a, uh, an approved acceptable rate of return for utilities, um, based on, you know, their cost of energy supplied. So, all that we can expect is that the contribution of our facility at a fixed rate of energy over 20-year period will overall support the stabilization of energy costs for ratepayers, who we are not providing directly to or contracting directly with, but we are contracting with their supplier. So, it should support price stabilization.
Okay, thank you.
Is it about price fixing?
No.
Okay, then let's wait until the end.
It's regarding price and...
Okay.
Um, so there were some concerns about the, um, I'm switching to staffing again. Why not provide 24-hour staffing for emergency support at the facility?
Uh, great question, Commissioner Johnson. So, I'll first say that the technology exists and the monitoring exists. I mean, every battery cell in these containers has a sensor on it. And we have a 24/7, um, uh, it's called the ROCKS, or Remote Operations Center. It's based in Salt Lake City, um, I'm sorry, actually, it's based in California. Um, but they are continuously informed of any sensors or alerts, uh, for all of our operating fleet across the country. So in, in, in theory, we can very much operate this facility without any onsite personnel. Uh, we have committed to provide the onsite personnel in large response to the concerns of the community. And the alternative just would have been that we would have contracted for O and M support, but they just may not have been stationed at the plant full-time. They may, they still would have been, uh, local, and they would have maybe just traveled to the site on an as needed basis to provide the full scope of O and M, uh, tasks. But, uh, we have all the 24/7 monitoring and, uh, information being provided to AES personnel. Um, so having site, uh, staff there Monday through Friday, presumably nine to five, um, is, um, an additional layer of personnel. Um, but we otherwise have the technology and the capability to fully be monitoring this on 24/7 basis. Um, I believe, um, Mike Simpson perhaps wanted to, uh, add further, um, support to this question.
Yeah, ma- ma- maybe a bit of extra context, thank you Joshua, is that, um, at our, at our existing sites, it's very common to have, um, you know, as Joshua alluded to earlier, some sort of, uh, you know, inspection that might make more sense to take, uh, place, uh, after hours. And so, with, with four O and M personnel, you have the opportunity to have people on call, um, just as the remote, uh, operations personnel would be on call, but could actually be available. Um, but what we've seen from, uh, all of our other energy storage sites is requests from the community that, uh, that we incorporate passive response mechanisms, right? Response mechanisms that, that don't require, um, some sort of, uh, active attendance. And so, um, while they, you know, while those O and M personnel are there to do, uh, manual, uh, in-person, uh, maintenance, uh, the, the kind of emergency response is actually addressed in all the, the types of measures we've been talking about that are autonomous. Um, that said, uh, just reinforce and repeat that even though we have those autonomous features, the, um, the Remote Operations Control Center has all the subject matter expertise and access to, uh, the rest of AES staff, uh, as well as, uh, the O and M personnel who would be stationed local.
Okay, thank you. I, I think part of my understanding of concerns about the sort of human oversight at the site, it makes sense that when the panels are off, you know, there may not be, and, and there's sophisticated mechanisms for monitoring the BESS. There may also be some sort of concern for outside factors that are not monitored by the sensors, right? Where your sensors are monitoring for potential defects or anomalies, et cetera. But the environment that this site is placed in also presents possibilities. So, I, I think, um, there may be some benefit to having, uh, even a single person, uh, able to respond as a human being with, you know, all the capabilities that we have. You know, robots, AI are getting impressive, but, uh, there, the human assurance is something that, um, I'm hearing from the community. So, I have one final question, and then I think, uh, at least one other commissioner does. This regards to the PFOA and forever chemicals. You, you addressed that in your, um, presentation. What are the PFOA forever chemical levels in parts per billion that are used in this project?
I'm not sure if I can give a specific response to your question. I think what I want to attempt to respond with respectfully, um, is there is no expected PFA release through the operation of this facility. Um, my understanding is there, and again, there's tens of thousands of PFAS. That, that, it stands for per and polyfluoroalkyl substance. And if you start to Google it, you'll find that they exist in our coffee filters, they exist in water bottles. I mean, it's, it's like, uh, it's everywhere. So the important thing is what specific PFA, uh, is of your concern? And my understanding is that in the construction or the product itself of a battery module or, or a solar module, there may be PFA, but it's not in a form that is, can be released. And so, in the operation, in the construction operation of the facility, there is no expected manner of a PFA release. Um, and what I understood the PFA concern to be was the conflation, um, and rightly the concern without proper study of prior PFA contamination that is known to occur in New Mexico. I believe, uh, La Cieneguía, um, is a community that I've become aware of that, um, unfortunately suffered from the use of aqueous film foaming, aqueous film foams, um, utilized, uh, to suppress fires, I think, on a, on a, uh, Air Navy Guard, or a, a National Guard, um, facility. Um, and that, and that caused groundwater contamination. Um, what our clean agent fire suppressant, uh, is, is this FK 5112, which unlike aqueous film forming foams, um, is a non-PBT. So AFFFs are PBTs. They are persistent bioaccumulative toxic, as determined by the EPA. Um, and that was a source of contamination that that community, and I believe, and some others, have become aware of, unfortunately, and it's arriving in their groundwater. Ours is a non-PBT PFA. So it's not persistent, it's not bioaccumulative, it's not toxic, it's approved by the EPA for use. And so, that is utilized only in failure scenarios, which are not expected. Because I do think it's worth mentioning that in our video demonstration of a single-cell failure, that is only after seven different levels of system redundancy of gas temperature, cell sensors, that if there's any, um, deviation from an acceptable operating threshold, cuts current. So that the cell actually never even arrives to the point of a thermal runaway where the fire suppressant's applied. So, and Mike can verify this for me, but my understanding is that in this system architecture and the product that we propose use here, and it's six-plus years of use, the fire suppressant, or I believe it's only three years of this specific direct injection, it's not even been deployed in any of our facilities. Um, and I, my understanding is we don't even have a single battery cell failure, but that there's several other mechanisms before you get to that point. So, again, in a hyper unlikely scenario where the clean agent is even utilized, it's a very small amount, it's vaporized upon contact, and again, it's within a fully contained, um, vessel, which is this, uh, battery energy storage container. So there's no mechanism or means for that substance, which is deemed safe by the EPA, and is vaporized upon contact, and has a less than seven-day atmospheric presence um to, again, enter groundwater in, in any form.
Okay, thank you for that additional detail, uh, yield.
Thank you. The following ques- um, actually, we will now go into, actually, we have another commissioner who has more additional follow-up questions. The questions would be directed specifically to the applicant or to staff as it may be applicable to the applicant in their ability to respond. Okay, Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Yes, our, all our questions have been, thank you Chair. Um, it's been mentioned in your presentation as well as...
I'm sorry, we will have questions from, specifically for staff, because the applicant will be leaving.
Right, this question is, we had a fifth bucket, as we agreed, that I had a fifth bucket. This question is for AES, okay?
Thank you.
And, um, it's been mentioned that you will produce power equal to up to 34,000 households. I didn't see in your presentation or any other evidence, um, based on your similar-sited solar facilities, what percent actually goes to households in reality? And what percent goes to businesses and other, uh, receivers of that power?
Yep, uh, thank you for the very good question, Commissioner Kokari Stone. So, I would like to, again, clarify, and, and I, and I attempted to do this other day, but, but I want to further clarify that when we reference the powering of 34,000 homes, that is to help turn energy speak into something that is hopefully understandable for the layperson. So it is an equivalent that we're speaking of. But we're not trying to say that this project's going to directly power all the residences of Santa Fe. We are trying to say, hey, what is 271 gigawatt-hours? What does that mean? Because for most people, that's a number without significance. So then, if you look at what typical household energy electricity consumption is over a year, and when you then look at the amount of energy that we expect to produce, that is the number that we communicate is the equivalent. But when you inject electrons in the grid, they are supporting the, the system, uh, throughout, um, and they are largely satisfying the closest, like, the closest demand, um, from, from the, from, uh, on the system. And so, it is reasonable, um, to assert that this project is going to largely provide power to Santa Fe, and at times, it's going to provide more than that, as P and M, um, stated, uh, in the, uh, Searchlight Media article, in which it could further also support loads in Albuquerque. But we are not trying to say this is specifically powering all the residences of Santa Fe. It's going to power all of their P and M ratepayers. But just to help understand and quantify what that is, that was the purpose of that citation.
Yes, thank you. And, and again, I'm just, I'm looking at the cup approval criteria, number one, how benefits the health and wellbeing of the actual community here in Santa Fe County. And I'm trying to get a sense of decision-making process or distributive processes, distributive, uh, of solar resource, how that happens? Who makes that decision? P and M, whether the businesses get it or the households get it? Based on that comparable estimate of solar power?
So, once an electron enters the grid, it does not distinguish who is utilizing the power. Um, it supports the system. Um, so again, it, I, there would be no number, uh, to say that this project specifically supplying power to Ms. Johnson's house, but not to, you know, Mr. Green's house. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to reference you, Commissioner, just trying to think of the first last name I could. So it's, does that help? It, it doesn't go to a specific customer?
Well, I heard in the testimony and that P and M allows customers to choose if they want solar or traditional.
So it's, that's accounting. Uh, so, so effectively, that is, and it looks like Mike also wants to pine, so I invite his comment, but when I was talking about what is broadly called a green tariff, it is a manner on which on paper, a new, a customer with a new load request seeking a lot of power can help directly finance and contract the addition of that power. If it's a co-located facility, then yes, it may directly power it. But if it's sited somewhere else, it's going into the system, but there's a means of accounting with P and M that is financing that injection of power. Mike, did you want to add something?
Yeah, ma- maybe an analogy that might be helpful, um, uh, because I think this is like, it's a great question. It's really, I think it's, I've had, I've been challenged to understand it. But maybe a good example would be if, if, you know, someone made the example the other day, um, I think in public comment about, um, bringing a bucket of water to, to a pool and adding that in. I think, um, water is a good analogy. That one might not, um, directly translate to the grid, but we could think about the water system throughout the city, um, as a good example. So, if I dye to drop, if I put a droplet of dye into, you know, a few droplets of water in, uh, a mainline pipe supplied to the city, and then trace that throughout, um, I may not be able to say, as Joshua said, that it goes to a specific house, right? Because the, the water's going to go wherever the first faucet turns on, basically. But, um, the same thing is basically true of electrons in a network. Really, it is a grid. These, these, these li- electrical lines can go multiple different directions and take turns and come back. Um, and at the end of the day, those electrons could go to, to a, a different household residence, business, um, or other consumptive source. Uh, and so, wh- what, what we're doing is we're providing to, um, to that main, right? Like, your house taps into the mainline, receives energy from there. Well, we, we will be supplying into a main, which is the transmission infrastructure. And then from there, um, the electrons flow passively to where they're needed. It's not even P and M necessarily controlling them individually. Um, but because we are interconnected to a substation that serves, uh, the, the local community in Santa Fe, uh, the vast majority of those electrons would be expected to, to flow to the path of least resistance, which would be the Santa Fe community.
And if I could just, uh, finish, Kokari, uh, Commissioner Kokari Stone, to address part of your question about the benefit of the residences, um, as we spoke to the concept of a fixed-price contract, um, that P and M, being an oversighted investor-owned utility, should be expected to translate a fixed low price of energy over 20-year period to their own customers with their own regulatory-approved, you know, markup on that. So, by providing a fixed cost of power for two decades, ratepayers indirectly from AES, but more directly from P and M, would benefit from a secure, safe, reliable, secure of, of power over multiple decades. Um, and then additionally, there's obviously the property tax benefits that we, uh, have talked about that would flow to benefit schools, uh, first responders, other, uh, county resources. And there's even scenarios, uh, and Mike would be able to speak to this more, um, but there are even scenarios where our projects, um, include something called black-started capability, or if, you know, P and M operating the larger transmission grid needed to turn down certain or turn off certain transmission lines in light of, you know, high winds or forest fire danger. The benefit of having a generation source close to your city um is if, you know, two of three lines in your city are down for emergency purposes or whatever, um, our facility can provide support, um, to be able to operate, to set and operate on a frequency um that can provide a resilient source of power, um, when otherwise conditions, um, you know, may, uh, would have otherwise forced a complete blackout or brownout on the facility. So there are benefits to distributed generation that you get with state-of-the-art facilities like this. Unfortunately, coupled with, with battery storage, without the batteries, you would not be able to provide or render the service, because the solar can only produce when the sun is out. But with the battery capability, we're storing solar power. If lines go down in the middle of the night, and there's people with medical devices, you know, that, or hospitals, specifically, other resources on the grid, our facility can start itself back up and continue to supply. Obviously, this is in coordination with P and M, who's operating the grid, but our facility can provide service to still provide power to, to a city if two of its three transmission lines are down. And that is worth undern- uh, underscoring as a contribution to the public welfare and wellbeing of the community. It's adding resilience.
Thank you, I appreciate Mike and Joshua. And again, as commissioners who are weighing, weighing the costs and benefits, uh, one final category, and last in terms of my questions, has to do with the site locality. Uh, the scale of the commercial solar, uh, facility in relation to the location. And in doing analysis of our, uh, emails that we've received opposing support, you know, we're looking at like just over 500 that opposed, and the supporters online, we're looking, um, around maybe 250, uh, testimonies, same analysis, uh, and bringing, because this is evidence. Uh, we had about 135 testimonies, more or less, and a large majority of those were opposers, but we still had strong supporters. About 85 to 90% of the opposers on both online pre-hearing, uh, and in the last, yesterday, were from the locality of the surrounding communities. So that's evidence, right? Lived experience of people. So, I just have a question, uh, mostly... So, I just have a question, mostly for real, the Rancho Viejo solar project, had you considered other sites and localities other than this particular area? Because when you look at the map and everything provided, you know, the locality is there, but the arguments have been made is that it's really still too close to where, I believe, 26,000 people, 26,000 people live. And again, 85 to 90% of those who are opposed live in this area. Did you, how did that process come about in decision-making?
Yeah, certainly, and it's a great question, Commissioner Kokari Stone, which I'd love to elaborate on. So, there's many factors in... Am I back? Okay, I'm back. Let's see if this holds. A great question, there's many factors that go into site selection, so I'll address them in no particular order. So, one is, as evidenced through the RFP itself, is that PNM asks for the ability to deliver energy to very specific service substations in their territory. One of those substations is the ZIA substation on Richards Avenue in Santa Fe. So, they are explicitly asking for bids and proposals for projects that can prove that they can deliver power into that substation. They are also asking for power at other substations throughout the state, and AES is actively developing solar power projects in other locations throughout the state, not just this one. But, based on the request from PNM, they would like to see proposals for a project that can deliver into the ZIA substation. This location, this site, is the closest, if you draw a circle around Santa Fe, this is the closest location that has approximately 700 acres, contiguous acres, that is flat enough, that has the terrain features that support citing the capacity that we're proposing, and that is in close proximity to existing transmission line. There's often a talk that there's, you know, millions of acres in New Mexico, let's put it somewhere else. Well, we really need to refine that to, what is the suitable land ideally along existing transmission corridors? We could look 30 miles south, but then we likely would, instead of hearing from people saying, "The facility is too close to my house, you're now building this 30-mile-long transmission line bringing power to Santa Fe." So, by trying to cite projects which are, in fact, safe and reliable enough to be cited in a community, again, there are solar panels on top of people's roofs, there are battery energy storage systems installed in people's garages. So, this is something that can be cited in proximity to where energy is consumed, but the land is appropriate. We've performed all of our environmental diligence and surveys and determined that there are not affected threatened endangered species or other, you know, archaeological, biological resources that would suggest it not to be suitable for citing a project. So, all of these factors, including successfully securing land, because that's not a guarantee, we do not own the land, we have an agreement to lease the land, there could be a brilliant piece of property, but if we cannot come to terms with the landowner, we cannot cite a project there. So, we came to terms with a landowner who had land that was close to transmission, close to load, that PNM is requesting a project for, and all of our evaluation, all of our diligence suggests that this is a safe location to build a facility.
Thank you very much. And the other questions for staff, but I understand a terroir de monte that will, will hold those, even if there's similar questions for the staff, for another time, is that correct? Okay.
And I also heard before that AES team has to leave. I just want to say that we are available to continue to answer questions as we obviously support this process, and so I'm going to push my flight back in order to support the ongoing questioning here.
You are welcome to stay. We arranged the questioning for staff as a separate to accommodate your schedule. If there are additional and you do leave, if there are additional questions, they would be made public and they would be made available to you, and we would ask for a response in writing, and they would be posted and made available to the public as well. Is there any follow-up to that, Attorney Boyd, as to how we would ensure that any questions provided to the applicant, once they leave, would be made available to everyone?
Chair Bustamante and Commissioners, yes, that's, that's correct, and I also want to note that I know that certain parties withstanding, I believe, at least the Clean Energy Coalition, are wishing to submit written responses to some of the materials that have been made part of the record and also the testimony, and certainly, they, they know there's a service list for providing additional filings, and I'll work with growth management staff to make sure that those submissions are made part of the record and available to the Commissioners as it, as it continues to consider this case.
Thank you. Okay, we will then take a break until 10 minutes till 12:00. Okay?
So, I'm sorry, may I ask, is there, is there not going to be any further questions of AES, or will we also be coming back?
There may be other questions of AES that will come up in the discussions, but there aren't currently questions for AES, and if there are additional questions that come up, we would submit those in writing and they would be made available to both the parties and the commission. So, the public would have access to those.
Would this be an appropriate time to request a closing comment from the applicant?
Not at this time, no. We, we don't have any cross-examination at all at this, at this particular hearing.
Okay, is there an opportunity at all in the, in the remainder of this process prior to your vote, in which the applicant, AES, can make a closing comment or a closing statement?
We were not prepared to have that. We could discuss that with our attorney, but that isn't something that has been scheduled or part of the considerations for today's. Today's was specifically set up for the questions that we had remaining for the applicant, the staff, and any, any of the parties.
Okay, yes, we respectfully would request that, given that we went first, and then there was obviously significant comment, both from the public, but also from other parties withstanding. We think that it would be appropriate to summarize and provide, you know, closing comments on behalf of our application, in part to respond to many comments that perhaps you did not have questions about, but maybe we still feel like we would like to share.
Okay, I appreciate that, and just for clarification, this wouldn't be the time to have any closing comments, given that we have a lot of consideration to do and we're not at that point for closing comments. Was there a question from the parties withstanding attorney? I'm sorry, we're not, you're not mic, you're not mic'd?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Just was curious how long the record would remain open for us to be able to file those additional items in response to the late filings that came in, if they, if we had a predetermined timeframe of how long that was. And then secondarily, if there is any chance for closing arguments from the applicant, we would ask that we be given a similar opportunity to present closing arguments as well. Thank you.
And we would take that into consideration as, as we need to. Thank you. You know, recognizing that everyone had specific timeframes for the presentation. Commissioner?
Commissioner Bustamante, thank you for moving us along. I just want to be clear, I know that one of the Commissioners had an appointment prior to our 2:00 PM County, regular Board of County Commission meeting. Are we going to be taking dedicated time to ask questions of the staff at another day? Or today?
Thank you for that consideration, Commissioner, and reminding me of this commitment that our Commissioner has. We did put this in this order because we can ask questions of staff. It's easier to convene at another time and have the applicant participate virtually. At this point, I would ask the commission if we want to take a motion and reconvene to ask the additional questions at another time, or take a break and continue with the questioning as staff is here. That is very much, this, this particular conversation has extended past the time that was expected, so I want to be considerate of the Commissioner who has a commitment at this time.
Well, I think there's more than an hour worth of questions for the staff, so probably we should meet at a separate time.
Agreed.
I agree.
Do we have that as a motion?
I move that we meet at a separate time. Do we want to decide now?
I think so.
I second it.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes to meet at a separate date and time.
You want to style this as a motion to recess and reconvene, the same?
And to recess, or recess and reconvene?
Recession and reconvene, yes.
Okay, by Commissioner Hughes?
Could I move to executive session very, very briefly to discuss scheduling?
And to assess scheduling?
Specifically for that. Just so that...
We have a friendly amendment to step out to executive session, but we also have been able to post executive session, then, you know, break after that. So, to include executive session, that we would go into executive session to consider the dates for the following hearing, and conclude everything after the executive session.
Yes, though it may be appropriate to announce it in a, from the DA's.
If we determine that today, yes, it would.
Yeah, so would we come back into session just to announce the time? I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. We have that as a motion from Commissioner Hughes, a second.
Second it.
A second from Commissioner Kokari Stone. We will be in executive session.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Roll call vote.
Chair Camila Bustamante? Commissioner Lisa Kokari Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
And that nothing was discussed except AES deliberations as allowed by the statute.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hughes, a second by Commissioner Kokari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are out of executive session. We, do we have another motion?
Yes, I move that we recess this session and reconvene on January 20, August. All right, I'm tired. August 26th at 9:00 AM to continue this session.
I second it.
So we have a motion to reconvene, to recess and reconvene on August 26th from Commissioner Hughes. We have a second from Commissioner Kokari Stone. At that time, we want to, may I include that we were, at that time, we will continue our questioning. All in favor?
Chair, I hate to interrupt, but the, the one remaining issue before this meeting is recessed is the, the issue of further written submission from either the applicant or parties withstanding.
There will be no more written or oral submissions from parties of, of interest.
Standing.
Standing.
Or applicant. I think, I think we need a decision from that, so I would, I would need a motion.
That would be a separate motion.
I would make a separate motion on that, yeah.
Okay, so let's vote on the first motion.
No.
Well, we've got to do the...
Pull that back because...
We've got to hold that back till we do the other one.
Got it, because we were about to adjourn. Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes that there will be no further written comment.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Johnson.
And just for clarity, that is from the applicant or parties from withstanding.
No written or further comments from the parties of interest? Sorry. Why do I keep saying parties of interest?
Parties of standing.
Parties of standing and the applicant. We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes, a second from Commissioner Johnson. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Camila Bustamante?
Yes.
Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now I can make my motion?
Yes.
I can make the motion that we recess this session and reconvene August 26th at 9:00 AM.
I second that motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes, a second from Commissioner Kokari Stone. At that time, we will continue questioning at that, on that date.